Order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up is approval of the agenda. Make a motion to approve your agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Comments from the public? Chris, I understand we do not have any. Thank you. Next, board's business, board working agreements. I understand, Andy, as we've been talking about this, we're going to approve it as is, but we're going to work on it in the future. So that you can make it more of your own or our own. Do I hear a motion? Go ahead.
Yeah, just so we're, so like as we go on, you add things or is that how?
I think we're trying to make it more simple.
Okay. That I can go.
We're not looking to add.
Okay.
I don't know if there is any.
Yeah, okay. Simple words better.
I move to approve the board working agreement as presented. This motion is made by myself. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, alright. Okay, superintendent comments. Mr. Gardner.
Well, not a whole lot to report, just in terms of like overall plans. The week of in-service, when staff comes back, the focus is entirely on getting schools ready to go. A lot of energy there. And then this week, or this past week, the focus has been on bringing the kids back and making sure that the week is a good start. So here were my impressions as I was able to, and all the DLT members as well, were out in all the schools, right? So we each visited probably eight or nine schools. Really fun, really enjoyed the time with the principals, walking around, being in classrooms, seeing the kids. And really liked the principals. Think they do a great job, there's a lot of enthusiasm. And I thought that the year started really well from that perspective. One of the comments we heard this morning from one of the principals was, it's just really energizing to see kids smiling without a mask on. It's just, it's a really, it's just healthy and super, super glad we're able to start in that way. We still have a lot of work to do when I, when I have met with principals. I know that we can do a better job in the systems to support them, to really free them up for more time and clarity. And that's something that will take some time, but we will work on that. And they were all really free with their comments about that, but it's from their perspective. Hey, here's, you know, something that I would want us to clarify or whatever. And so we'll, we'll start working on those. Had a great meeting this morning with principals and the DLT here, where we spent time thinking about how to attack some of those things so that we can do that. And so I just feel a real responsibility that we, and I think I've made this comment. Teachers and administrators face the kids, right? And if they're having to constantly turn away from that to work on things that we think we can do a better job streamlining, we will free them up to more fully face the kids and really build a great district. And so I have a lot of responsibility as we continue to do that work. A few things that I want to clarify, I won't be very long tonight because I think we'll go a little bit longer at the next meeting. Goals reporting, I have three goals that we are going to be working on, and I gave you guys a little bit of a timeframe for how that will go. The one thing that is, was common to all of those is they only have about the first five months of steps on them, right? So we'll show you, we are going to come to you on the second meeting every month and give you guys an update on what we're going to be accomplishing with the three different goals, right? So you guys can see a couple of caveats that I want to give to you guys. There will probably be some amendments to what, so when you are looking at that, you can say, okay, that's the plan right now. But just give you an example, Jane has come in and we've added a couple of things that we know we need to do before we go further. And I think we'll sometimes run into some things that will slow us down a little bit, but we're going to use that, the second meeting of the month, just to update our progress on these through the year. So just a couple of other things, we are right now in the middle of conducting a lockdown drill with police presence until the 31st of October, that's the goal, that everybody will have completed one. Got our first one done today. The police were present at that, checked in on that. Going to touch base with Chief Harden just around the number of officers that are present, each one of them. I think that there is a real willingness though, on the part of the police to be a part of that, they did debrief. We will be doing those, and I believe Nolan has told me we have only two schools left to schedule. So we're going to be pretty busy here over the first month and a half. We will then go back, just after Veterans Day, we will get together with the police again, just review what we've learned, and then move forward. Another one, the SRO, we have had two SROs. Marcia is in the process of finalizing the second one, and that officer will be here on the 26th to meet you guys and be presented by Marcia. That's what I got. Oh, and a couple of other things, just a comment. We were very extended this summer in both maintenance and grounds as we put in the Sunrise Elementary Playground, which had been purchased, what, a year prior, I think?
Central?
Central.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Central. And the groundskeepers put that in. And so we did get some comments about the state of our grounds, and we're going to work on that. But I will say that through the week, last week, at four of the schools that I did visit, they were in the process of cutting, cutting the, the grass and dandelions. And so obviously, we're going to work on that and just be thinking about that. We did get some comment, I acknowledge that, and we'll, we'll be working on making sure that we're looking better by the end of this year and going into next. That's all I got.
Okay, next is board reports. Michael, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't have any report.
Eric?
Uh, just that the, it's, it's public, but the Albany Public School Foundation, their executive director is moving to the great state of Montana, and Amy Addison is going to be a huge loss in our community, and she's raised and supported raising millions of dollars for our school district. So our, sure, our appreciation as a board to her and the hard work that she's done. And we're excited to meet the new executive director of the Albany Public School Foundation soon.
Yeah, thank you for all your work. Well done, Amy.
I just wanted to say that I was really pleased to see the flags flying over Clover Ridge. I know last year, they, they hadn't been flying, there were, there was a problem with the pole, then it got resolved. And they were flying first day of school this year, I go by there every day when I'm going back and forth. And I was really happy to see that and, and good to see that progress taking place.
Okay, myself, I had an opportunity to talk to John Anderson, who's the Boys and Girls Club executive. And they're having some of the same issues that everyone else is with getting staffed up, you know? Another thing that has changed for them is their ratio of instructors to students or people they can supervise has decreased quite a bit, they did that nationally. They actually led in the way in that, so that was nice. But in essence, what this means is they're not able to have as many people on their property as they have in the past, which is unfortunate. He thinks he's going to be able to improve that as kids go back to college and are looking for part-time jobs, but we'll wait and see. He was, so part of that is waverly, we have a satellite program going there. It's not quite as large as we had hoped, and that's basically just due to staffing, you know? So he's real focused on that, we're all focused on that, but you know, there's certain amount of limitations and a lot of it's staffing. I, I would like to say, I think it's great that all the kids are back to school. I think it's also really great that the, all the DLT and everyone is out in the schools. I think that's really important for our administrators and the teachers to see you out there supporting them. I think it's important for all of us to get out there. I think it's great that the administrations are really focusing on keeping the kids well behaved and kind of getting back to more normal behaviors, whether it be, you know, having a phone in the class or, you know, behavior issues. The reality is, our, our kids are behind, the average kid is behind in their learning progress due to the past couple of years of COVID, you know? And that's just a reality. I think one of the things we can do to help our teachers and professionals catch them up as best we can is give them an environment where the kids can learn. Okay, committee, community and school presentations, I don't believe we have any. Consent agenda, personnel license, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve personnel licenses presented.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And Chris, I assume that personnel classified, since there's nothing there, there's no one to?
No, there is.
That was added.
There is.
It was a late add.
There's quite a few.
Significant, yeah.
So is that?
It's in board book.
Okay.
If anyone wants to look at it, I do have it pulled up.
It was good to see that many.
And, and there's still more, we still need more, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you ready for a motion yet? Pete, or you want, nope? I'm looking at the numbers myself, I got you, okay. So personnel classified, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve personnel classified.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, minutes from 8:22, 22 regular board meeting? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from 8:22, 22 of the regular board meeting.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Old business? None? No reports?
If we do have one.
Sorry, K1 restraint and seclusion report, since superintendent Harlan.
Yeah, thank you. A reminder to the board, this is an annual report that's due about this time every school year regarding restraint and seclusion from the last year. I'd like to invite Dr. McGuire, our special programs director, to the podium to go over the report, what it means. And you have this available in board book to you.
All right, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Krista McGuire, the director of special programs. And so you, as Assistant Superintendent Harlan said, you have the data in your packet. A couple of things that I just wanted to draw your attention to, at the start of last school year, we made a conscious decision to change the program, the intervention program we use. We had formally used CPI Crisis Prevention Institute. And so we started transitioning at the start of last school year with MANT, which is also a similar type of program. MANT has had a lot of success with really focusing on the preventative aspects of student behavioral intervention. And so the building rapport and intervening before, there's a need to have any type of physical interaction with students. And also the focus on trauma and the impact that trauma plays on our students with significant behavior. And so you can see from the data that I put in there a four-year comparison this year, last year I had given you a three-year comparison. I wanted to really try and compare us back to pre-COVID because like last year's data, we're, we have more reported incidents this last year than we had the previous year. But keeping in mind that the previous year, we weren't in school most of that time, and so the numbers were really low. But what you can see is we're still significantly lower than we were in the 1819 school year, which was way before there was any type of impact from COVID closures. We're significantly lower in both the numbers of physical restraint and seclusion. And so I know there's been a lot of talk about student behavior and discipline in the schools. And really, it's exciting, what this data shows us is our staff really are doing a good job of managing the most significant behavior that typically results in students needing to be restrained. And so I know that, you know, with students being out of school and we have some increases in maybe lower level behaviors, but we're not seeing those same level or we're able to effectively intervene for the higher, more significant levels of behavior. And so that is really good. I did notice that we are a little bit higher in our use of seclusion. And that, for those students, it's still a small number of students that had a seclusion incident. And those were very deliberate decisions that were made for those students based on safety of being able to restrain. And so oftentimes, for larger students, the team, the teams have made determinations that the use of seclusion is a, a more safe intervention at that level than being physical with larger students. And so anytime we do use seclusion, definitely, it's always part of the IEP as well as typically for students who have incidents of restraint. As soon as we know that a student has that type of possibility to have unsafe behavior, we always incorporate a plan into their IEP for that. The other thing that I would just mention, on the last page, there's demographic data. Some of this data is hard to fully draw conclusions from due to the small numbers that we're talking about. But you can see that for some of our students, based on their demographic profile, they are a much higher increased oper, or incidence of having a physical restraint or seclusion incident. So specifically, our students on IEPs. And, and sometimes that makes sense because most of the time, students with that significant of behavior, part of their IEP is their behavior, but our economically disadvantaged students are at a much higher likelihood of having an incident of restraint or seclusion as, based on the data, also our black or American Indian or Alaskan natives. But again, those are very small numbers, we're talking about two students, but that sways the data to show that they're at a higher risk than other students in that racial demographic. And so those were the things that I wanted to kind of draw your attention to. Are there any questions about the use of physical restraint or seclusion in the district?
There I go. I just, I like the trend line going from, you know, if you look, you basically ignore COVID year, but going from 253 to 80. And so I just want to know, what would you attribute to this success in that decrease?
I think it's a couple of things. I, I do think that last year, switching over to MANT was helpful. I think having, we have trainers on staff that do a good job of meeting with teams. It's hard when you get one training and that's all you get for the year. We've increased, during that time, we've expanded our district behavior team. And two of the members of the district behavior team are, are, are our MANT trainers. And so just having increased supports, preventative supports through the district behavior team, I think has been really helpful in decreasing the number. And really just thoughtfully building behavior plans. Again, with expanding the behavior team, we're much more able to get in there and help teams problem solve through what are the students' triggers, what could we do differently? So I think that those all contribute to that downward trend.
Excellent, yeah, let us know what we can do to, to help with that. Because that really goes to Pete's point of making a better learning environment for all the students when we can control that type of outbursts in the classroom, we can focus more on learning, so that's, thank you very much.
Right, when we have, when we have a restraint, we have to typically do a room clear and then all students are, their learning environment is being impacted. And so being able to control that number does make a more accessible learning environment for everyone.
Well done, thank you.
Yeah. One thing I'd like to point out that Dr. McGuire had talked about was this behavior cadre. So behavior cadre was something that we staffed with SIA funds and was new in the last, I think probably two years now. And those are highly trained, very skilled people with very extreme behavior, and we have five. And two of those five are trainers, so we can constantly train staff. But that is a result, a direct result of SIA funds and a direct result of one of the goals of our SIA plan being behavior support, so.
And you'll see on there, we, we report the number of restraint incidents by untrained staff. And that has never been a large number for us, but it's at zero now. We, because we have enough staff that are trained, that are in every building. And again, a huge part of the training, there is the part that is teaching how to safely do a hold or a restraint. But the, the main emphasis is the preventative part of it, how to de-escalate verbally so that you're never getting to that point. And so I think having a larger number of people who are trained in every building and every program, particularly where we know we might have kids that may have behavior that rises to that level. And again, that's a factor of having highly trained people access to them throughout the day. And we're training more and more people, and so that helps us not have to go there.
Michael?
So are these, does this occur in every type of classroom we're talking about, or just the, the serious behavior classrooms?
No, some of these, some of the reports we get, because we get a report after every single incident and we review them after every single incident. The concentration of them are in our programs, particularly our programs focused on behavior. And a good percentage of them come from our Behavior Intervention Center, which we're shifting the language. We're not calling it our Behavior Intervention Center anymore. We're just calling it Fairmount because it's in the Fairmount Building where my office is, to really try and not have the focus for those students because that's their school, that's their learning environment, to not have it be associated with, well, it's just a behavior program because we provide all of the education. So just a little plug there. But a lot of them come out of those programs, but not all of them. So some of these incidents are incidents that happen in the regular education setting, the regular education environment. And again, having all of our deans are trained in, or will, we're rolling over the training. So we got a large percentage of these people trained last year in MANT. We still have some people, we did a very large training before school started this year, and we have a couple more days planned through the year to get everyone 100% transitioned over to MANT. But all of our deans are trained, oftentimes principals are trained. Certainly, every building has a behavior support person, they're always trained. And so there are people who are available during, in each school that are trained.
Thanks.
I had a question, is CPI and MANT reporting the exactly the same?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, the reports, there's some slight differences in how they fill out the report, that in terms of reporting the number of them. Yeah, so our report to ODE is the same regardless of which system we use. So our numbers are the same regardless of which system we use.
Thank you, ma'am. And one more, one more question for you. Would you mind following up with the board at a later time with the demographics of age? So how many elementary, middle and high school students?
That were restrained or, so just a breakdown of the age? Yeah, and would you want that to be another report or just information shared?
We can just send it to you, you, you know, this gives you a good context and we can just.
Just a simple email.
Does that work for you?
Okay, yeah, that's easy to do, I can do that.
Heather, looks like you had something?
Yes, you've spoken about the restraint and seclusion. But what I recall, a part of the training and, and what I've heard and I, and I believe is happening is the de-escalation occurring before it gets to that. And I just want to give a shout out and have you be able to maybe speak to that. It really isn't all about restraint and seclusion. Your team is helping our staff, all staff, know how to de-escalate before it's getting there. And I think that's just a really important piece of the work you guys are doing.
Yeah, yeah, as I said, a big part of the training is recognizing, for one, how to stay calm yourself. Because when another person is escalating, it's hard to maintain your own. And you can't help regulate a student if you're not regulated. So we really have been working on, how do you stay regulated? What do you need to do if you're not being able to maintain that? What are the triggers? So again, part of the behavior plans are really recognizing the triggers and even just your body language. When a student is starting to escalate, what is your body showing them? So instead of like moving in kind of toward the student, you're kind of maintaining a relaxed posture and just, but you're, you know, looking for what are the possible safety concerns that we could have? So the first half of the training for everyone is focused very much on recognizing and knowing how to try and verbally de-escalate. And then the last part of the class is then how you safely do a physical restraint. And it's always the last resort, and it's really only used in circumstances of imminent threat or safety. I know that we train people like, oh, well, they were going to destroy the computer or the iPad. And it's like, yeah, and that would be bad, we wouldn't like that, but that's not imminent, you know? And if you can move that, if you can get the item out of the way, then do that. But really, because it's not safe for either the student or the person doing the restraining, and it's, it takes an emotional toll on both as well. So you really only want to have that physical intervention when it's an imminent safety concern. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. McGuire. Okay, bond business reports?
Don't think we have anything, do we?
Nope. New business, superintendent and board goals?
They're on the, they're on the updated agenda, do you guys see those? And again, we'll come back next month and begin to, or next meeting, second meeting of the month, we'll be giving you guys updates on our progress on those.
And it looked like we're looking for, to approve or to, for a motion, is that correct? Looking for a motion, yeah. And move to approve superintendent and board goals as presented? No?
I'll wait for the second. I'll second it. I had a question, so the packet that we're looking at is like, a lot of goals. It still has all of our original, like three or four each. So I'd like to amend the motion to use the, make an amendment to the motion to use the superintendent goals as the board goals for this coming school year.
So as a technical matter, should I withdraw my?
Just need a second on the amendment.
I second the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Future agenda items, we have none. Other business, not on there? Here we go, English Language Learner State Report, sorry, Lisa.
No, no worries.
These are always O1 or S1, sorry.
No, it's other business because it's information only. Every year, we have an English learners' report and it reports the.
Every year, we have an English learners' report, and it reports the data from the spring for the ALPA assessment, which is an assessment that's taken annually from all of the students who are learning English as another language, in addition to the many they often already know. And so this report's due every year, it's for your information only, it doesn't need to be approved, but it, it does need to be presented to the board, and so you'll find that there.
Anyone have any questions on that?
Were there any surprises or things that we would, you want to point out or things we should know of interest?
You know, one of the things that I think would be important to know that is exciting when I think of our bilingual education program are some of the new opportunities for high school students who are taking English language development. So it used to be, and this changed just this past year, that if you had to take English language development classes at the high school, the only credit you could get for them was as an elective, and so it would cut into your elective credits for other things. But now, you can get language arts credits for language arts that's taken in Spanish or, or any language in this district. We only have a bilingual education program in Spanish, and so we're really excited about the opportunities that that opens up and that it's a more true reflection of what students know in terms of those literature standards, and so that's exciting. We know last year, we had a pretty big group and a pretty big class for bilingual education program. The exciting thing is, is that's going to be the first of many now, right? Because those classes are also large. And so I would just, yeah, I would invite you to read the report and email any questions that you have, but we are really blessed to have Stacy Lee, who is our curriculum coordinator, who does a lot of the work with the bilingual education program, and just to do a shout out in terms of our staff that go above and beyond, she worked tirelessly personally to find a bilingual education teacher that we needed several, but specifically for South, so much so that when this person was trying to relocate, she offered her own home for them to come and stay until they could find a place, because, and so I just want you to know that we have staff that go above and beyond every day what people would expect to make sure we have really great people in front of our kids, and our bilingual education program has amazing teachers and literally is what it is because of the staff that we have working for it. So just a public shout out to our curriculum coordinator, who's done a fantastic job, so.
It was really amazing going, oh, go ahead.
I don't know, go ahead, finish your statement.
It, it was really amazing going to the graduations, I thought, to see these young men and women getting certified in more than one language. I don't know the exact number, but I think it was like mid-thirties.
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Thirty-two from South and ten from West.
It, it was amazing, you know, and that just opens up so much opportunity for them in the rest of their life. It's quite a big deal for them, and it's a lot of work for us to get it done, so that's, like Lisa says, kudos to them. Javier, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. No, so one of the things I want to, you were asking for something interesting to, to point out, on page ten, it says characteristics of current English language learners in Oregon, just to give people an idea of what demographics are. Although there were current English learners in every grade, approximately two-thirds, sixty-two, sixty-two percent, or six, almost sixty-three percent, were in kindergarten through fifth grade. So I think that's kind of a demographic that I think is a reality for what's happening in our schools, and it's just more reason for us to be aggressive in how we actually recruit for bilingual, bilingual staff. Right now, we're, we're really trying to find talented people to come work for, for the district, but it's, it just proves to, proves the point that the younger you go, the more diverse our, our communities are becoming. So I thought that was an interesting factor dynamic in the report that you all might want to check out.
Thank you for sharing that data. That is good data to understand. Go ahead.
I have a question for Superintendent Harlan. Is the new preschool at South Shore dual immersion as well?
It is. It is. We got additional preschool promise funding, so that will open, I think it's this week, actually, next week in the fall, so it will, yeah, it's a dual immersion preschool. We'll have eighteen, it filled up almost immediately, and so we'll have four preschools in the district and our continued partnership this year with Maple On. So in the, you know, four years, this is starting my fifth year, we will have gone from one preschool to four and kept Maple On open, so that's pretty exciting for our community, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Build it, and they will come with preschools on talent.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I have, this wasn't really part of my reports, but I just, kind of a question. So the summer ended, maybe some numbers on how many people took advantage of the various summer programs we, we offered. You know, my little editorial comment is, we're all going to be thinking about catching up, and I think the summer of last year and the summer of this year and summers ahead, summer should look differently, frankly, whether, you know, we provide or someone else ones. I think that's how you're going to help clean it, catch up, and so I'm just curious how many...
So, Michael, unless, I'll ask Lisa if you have accurate numbers, or we could come back on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Just, yeah, it was on top of my head.
I'd be happy to give a, just a report like we did last summer in terms of the, the numbers, and I can pull the report from last year, too, just as a comparator, but what I can tell you is, the summer has looked different in the last two years, and you're right in that that is the time to capture, to be able to advance learning, and yeah, I'd be happy to give a summer report our next board meeting. I think it's, you'll, if, there's some great stuff there, so.
No, I think that'd be great. Good, good point, Michael.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.